Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 9th, 2020 school committee meeting at 5:01 PM. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to bargaining with employee groups and/or personnel matters. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. Requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. The school committee meeting will reconvene after executive section at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the December 9th, 2020 regular school committee meeting at 6:06 PM. The December 9th, 2020 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. This is a virtual meeting via WebEx. Due to the recent open meeting law, all of these that fought by the governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. To participate, please call 978-771-0819. In view live through televised cable channels Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or at youtube.com/tuksburytv. Just a reminder, the phone number that was originally printed on tonight's agenda is incorrect, and if you are calling in, the correct number is 978-771-0819. As a preliminary matter, my name is Keith Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the Tuxbury School Committee. Please allow me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda tonight are present, can hear me, and give consent to be recording tonight. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mr. Cutlass?
I consent.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair confirms as well. Staff, please respond as well. Superintendent Malone?
Aye.
Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Regan?
Aye.
And Mr. Libbey, business manager?
Aye.
Our anticipated guest speakers for this evening, Young Jack Stadman?
Jack's gonna try to make it, but he might have another appointment, so we're trying to get him in.
All right. Thanks, John. Principal Garrish?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Thank you. Principal McGinnis?
Yes, here as well.
Thank you. Principal Harding?
Here.
Principal Ware?
Here.
And Mr. Druin?
Here.
And we also have some guests tonight. Thanks for attending. Some retirees, Ms. Mary Ann Deschler?
Here.
Ms. Nancy Calagian? Mrs. Kathy Starling?
Yeah.
And I think that's everyone. Brenda, is that everyone?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Karen Cronin, principal of the North Street School as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Principal Cronin?
You just gave me the extra time so I could find the unmute button. I am here.
Great, thank you. Boy, that's all I do in attendance. As I said, good evening. This is an open meeting of the school committee. It is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders due to COVID. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda material for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To participate, please call 978-771-0819. For this meeting, the Tuxbury School Committee is convened using WebEx as posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. View live through televised cable channels Comcast 22, Verizon 34, or at youtube.com/tuksburytv. Please note that this Please note that this meeting is being recorded and aired live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that people may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this party are available on the district website or by request. Please email gailjohnson@gjohnson@tuxbury.k12.ma.us. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I otherwise know. Before we move to the first agenda item, please allow me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Also, remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And if anyone has a comment or question, it can be submitted on the chat window, and you'll be recognized. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. Regarding items for Citizen Forum, I will ask members of the public who would to speak to identify themselves by their name and address for the record. Once recognized, members of the public will be welcome to speak about any current or present agenda item. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And one other matter of business, I don't think I had Mr. Druin on my attendance policy. Mr. Druin, are you here with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's a good opportunity to also welcome Principal Chenanovich and Ms. Nancy Collagian. They've jumped on the call as well.
Well, great. Thank you very much. Welcome. And while you have the floor, why don't I turn it over to you for our recognitions and our early retirees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, at the urging of school committee member, which is a great suggestion, we looked at some of the unusual elements as a result of this pandemic, and one of them is certainly the ability to recognize our outstanding individuals. Typically, we do retiree recognition at the end of the year, but however, considering the fact that the pandemic may influence people's decisions either very late in the summer or early in the school year, we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity while these individuals still had a strong relationship with the school district to certainly recognize them. We're here actually to honor five different retirees, three of which are present here this evening. We're very proud. I'd like to go through the list of the retirees and mention a few items, and then hand it over to Ms. Regan and the principals to talk a little bit more in depth about our retirees. But again, a huge thank you to these five individuals for their dedication, professionalism, and certainly the support of Tuxbury's youth. Without individuals like these, we certainly would not be able to provide the appropriate services for our students in a caring manner that they've done. So the five individuals are Ms. Mary Ann Deschler, 19 years of service as a classroom instructional aide retiring from the Wynn Middle School. Ms. Nancy Collagian, 19 years of service as a reading specialist, most recently at the Dewing Elementary School. Ms. Teresa Olberg, 16 years of service as a classroom instructional aide at the North Street Elementary School. Ms. Kathy Starling, 16 years of service as a classroom instructional aide at the North Street Elementary School. And Ms. Denise Trevor, 16 years of service as a classroom instructional aide at the North Street Elementary School. If you add that up, Mr. Chairman, that is 86 years of dedication and experience to our young people. We can't do our jobs without individuals like this who put in this level of service, this level of time, this level of dedication, and they are also extremely difficult to replace. So they will be missed extensively, and we appreciate their service very much. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Regan.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Malone. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if I was still muted. I appreciate that. I'm going to start with Ms. Nancy Collagian, who, as Superintendent Malone said, is celebrating 19 years of service as a reading specialist with Tuxbury Public Schools. I'm first going to have Ms. Terry Garish, our principal at the Dewing School, say a little bit about Nancy.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. On behalf of Principal Cronin and I, I'd like to thank Mrs. Collagian for the love of reading she has imbued to all of her students, the read alouds, which are one of her favorite things to do, the kindness that she showed children, and the ways that she looked to get to know each child so that she could create lessons and find topics to interest them. I'd like to also recognize her as a professional colleague. She exemplifies what it means to be a lifelong learner, as she continues to frequently forward articles, books, and suggestions for classroom and school libraries. And I also know of her firsthand generosity, because even as she's packing her things to leave the Dewing, she's looking to see how her resources might benefit others, packing them for schools in other countries and to share her wealth of resources. We are so grateful to have had her with us, and we wish her so well in the future as she leaves.
Thank you, Ms. Garish. Nancy, I have a little surprise for you. George Paul, retired principal of the Trainhand School and our Title I grant manager, has written a little something he'd like to say in honoring you for your retirement. He says that "In any way she could, Nancy was a tireless worker with the success of her students of paramount importance. She would attend many reading conferences to discover the latest materials, technology, and methods to help students improve reading. Nancy was dedicated and loyal to me throughout the years we worked together. She would also look to spend any of my supply money for student materials. If I had $50, she would want 55. As a fellow Somerville High graduate, we had many conversations about Somerville High School and even sang our fight song together at a Title I meeting. Another interesting aside was when the tall ships were in Boston a few years ago. On one Sunday, I was watching the news on television when the reporter was covering the story on a Russian ship. Lo and behold, there was Nancy being interviewed." He hopes these kind words give you a smile and just remind you of how important you were in the lives of many of our students and our readers. And he said, yes, retirement is all it's cracked up to be. Congratulations, Nancy. Okay. Joining us next, whoops, let me move, is Kathy Starling, 16 years of service as a classroom instructional aide at the North Street Elementary School. Principal Cronin, would you like to say a few words about Ms. Starling?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to speak about such a warm and compassionate individual. I could tell you that Mrs. Starling touched the lives of so many children that came through the building at North Street. She was always patient, always kind, always empathic, always smiling, and ready to come back for the next day to remind kids that tomorrow was again a new day, and it could also be another wonderful day of learning. But Kathy didn't just help the students and their families. She was an incredible asset to the school as a community. She was generous with her time, with her skills, with her talent. She's very artistic. She's an unbelievable quilter. She made the best bulletin boards, and everybody that was around her always just felt her warmth and generosity. So Kathy, we miss you. It is not the same place without you, but we hope that retirement is treating you well, as George Paul lets us know. Thank you so much for those kind words.
Okay, Kathy. And then also with us tonight is Ms. Mary Ann Deschler. Again, 19 years of service as a classroom instructional aide at the John Wynn Middle School. Principal Ware?
Hi, Mary Ann. I know you're here. I know you're here by phone, and I want to thank you so much for your 19 years of support and dedication to our staff and students. You always went above and beyond, and students were always the first thing in your mind. You've fostered a lot of lifelong relationships with a lot of our staff that I know you'll continue to enjoy throughout your retirement. And also, Mary Ann went above and beyond. Not only was she important in the classroom, giving her all there, she would chaperone dances. She was a frequent chaperone, volunteer chaperone to our trip to Washington, DC. And the school climate with her was just, it'll be very different without her, and we'll miss her. So, you know, have great fun with your friends and family on Drake's Island Beach in Maine, and I wish you all the best in your retirement.
Okay. Let me stop sharing my screen here and just say to our five retirees, Nancy Collagian, Teresa Olberg, Kathy Starling, Kathleen Starling, Denise Trevor, and Mary Ann Deschler, we wish you all the best and a happy and healthy, great times in your retirement. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. And I'm just gonna go to my colleagues. I'm gonna start with Mrs. Demos, who had a wonderful idea to do this halfway through the year. I think it's something that we should continue even moving forward and not wait till the end of the year. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to all the retirees tonight. Their many years of dedication and hard work to the Tuxbury Public School system is greatly appreciated, and the students here in Tuxbury have benefited greatly from their guidance and their wisdom over these years. They'll be missed, and I just want them to know how much they were appreciated.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Cutlass, anything to add?
No, I'll just echo Mrs. Demos's words and thank Mrs. Deschler, Mrs. Collagian, Mrs. Olberg, Mrs. Starling, and Mrs. Trevor as well. I know some of them well, and I know they've done a tremendous job with the Tuxbury Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mr. Stadman? All right. And Mr. Wilson?
Well, I'd like to echo what John said, but I had trouble understanding him. So I just want to congratulate you on achieving retirement. It's certainly an exciting time. I appreciate your hard work and dedication to the students. It's been a particularly challenging year, so thank you for all the extra efforts and hard work. And, you know, just, you know, it's wonderful to hear such nice things, and best of luck in retirement.
Great. And I'm just gonna echo what my colleagues had to say. Having two kids that went through the North Street, I also am aware of some of these teachers and aides, the wonderful people. You really do the town proud. We can't be happy enough, proud enough of the service that you've given to our children in the classroom and outside as well. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors, and most importantly, please, please have a very happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. And on behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee and our administration, thanks again for all your dedicated service to our students. All right. With that, we are going to... Has Jack... We got Jack here yet, John? See if we have Jack. I don't see Jack. Maybe I'll go over to... Why don't I turn the floor over to Mr. Druin for his update and presentation regarding Tuxbury Athletics?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get started, 86 years for those retirees. That's awesome. Congratulations to them. Best of luck in retirement. I thought the best way to go about this would be to kind of wrap up the fall, so you guys have an idea of how the fall went, and then take you into the winter. So in the fall, we offered seven sports. We offered boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' cross country, field hockey, golf, and volleyball. We offered 11 levels of participation. Varsity and JV at the soccer levels, varsity and JV at the cross country levels, field hockey levels, golf levels, and we offered three levels of volleyball. We participated in over 100 games. Football, swim and dive, and cheer were moved to Fall 2, which will run February 22 through May 1. With the help of Mr. Malone and John Bernard, we created a COVID checklist, which we sent to all our opponents weekly. In turn, most of the league has kind of copied our COVID checklist, and now that's kind of a common document throughout the league, just to go over your protocols at your school. There's generally a weekly conversation between the two superintendents that are playing that week, just about cases in the schools. It was a great tool. I appreciate Chris's support there, and John Bernard's. They were excellent. All our athletes on game day get their temperatures checked. So our rosters are printed. The student athletes' temperatures are taken. They're placed on the rosters, and when we go on the road, the first thing we do, we get off the bus, is hand the opposing AD a copy of our temperatures of our athletes and our coaches that are coming into their communities. Same thing with us. We have all those. We painted our turf with temporary paint. We put little circles on our turf, six feet apart, so the kids basically lived on a circle, and they were six feet apart to help them stay socially distant on the bench areas. Student athletes were assigned a seat in the bus. They sat in that seat all year long to help with contact tracing. It worked great. Masks were on all the time. Hand sanitizer was readily available, and our equipment was cleaned in a timely fashion to keep everything safe. The MVC offered more sports than anybody in Eastern Mass, and we participated in more games than anybody in Eastern Mass, because most leagues did not offer volleyball. We got a diverse league. We got diverse communities, and I was very proud to say that we handled that safely all fall. I thought the fall was a big success. On top of that, the student athletes got approximately half the number of games, so we did reduce the user fee a bit to make that equitable for the families. Okay? Moving into the winter, the sport committees, and I'm on the basketball committee, so the sport committees worked on modifications for each sport. They in turn moved those forward to the COVID task force that the MIA put together, who in turn moved those to the Sports Medicine Committee, which has a good handful of doctors on that committee, which in turn moved that to the Board of Directors, who approved winter athletics. The MIA, coupled with EEA, put together their winter modifications for athletics. Okay? At this point, we can offer boys' and girls' basketball, boys' ice hockey, girls' ice hockey, and gymnastics. We'll be offering three levels of basketball, freshman JV and varsity for boys' and girls'. We'll be offering two levels of boys' ice hockey, one level of girls' ice hockey, one level of gymnastics. Boys' and girls' indoor track has been moved to Fall 2. Winter cheer and wrestling have been moved to the spring. They're actually considering trying to wrestle outdoors, which is, could be pretty cool. I met with what I'm gonna call our cleaning experts, John Marchand, Brett Weiss, and Kelly Constantino and Mackenzie Cooney, and we went over the protocols for breakaway ice, where we play boys' ice hockey. We went over the protocols for Methuen High School, their ice rink, where we play girls' ice hockey. We went over the protocols for Wilkie's Gymnastics, where we do gymnastics, and we went over our protocols, which I will take you through quickly. They were very satisfied, pleased, comfortable, is a good word, I think, comfortable with what's being done in those facilities. And I feel like they're comfortable with what we're doing. So some of the things we're doing, we have tripled the number of signage in the gym, social distancing, proper hygiene, face covering required, masks required, no gaiters, et cetera. Okay? Locker rooms will remain closed at all time. Hand sanitizing stations will be displayed throughout the gym, and on game days, they'll be placed on the scorer's table. Each bathroom will have a capacity of two people at one time, no more than two. Bathrooms will be cleaned cleaned multiple times daily. There'll be a designated area for mask breaks at both ends of the gym. There'll be a maximum capacity of 25 people on the court at a time, provided, those 25 people need to stay in separate co-ops. So, for example, our varsity basketball team on one half of the court, our JV basketball team on the other half of the court, and no inter-squad scrimmages there. Okay? Our basketballs, our wrestling mats, any other shared equipment will be cleaned in 20-minute intervals. Okay? The reason we went with 20 minutes is, in basketball, for example, they want a new basketball every quarter. I went off of a basketball game being approximately an hour and a half long, so we used four quarters, figured 90 minutes, and we went about every 20 minutes thinking that we should put a clean basketball in, or clean the equipment every 20 minutes, excuse me. Electronic whistles were purchased for all our coaches, so there'll be no more blowing in the whistle. Everybody's using electronic whistle. All our benches, tables, chairs, game clocks will be sanitized at the beginning and end of every session. During our practices, I've left a 15-minute window in between. So, on a regular day, our freshman teams would come in, they would split the gym by dropping the curtain. There's a 15-minute gap once they're done. So, once their practice is done, they get dressed, they leave the gym. In that 15 minutes, we're doing all our cleaning of all our basketballs, tables, chairs, benches, et cetera. The next team will come in, or teams, which would be, you know, varsity and JV girls, or varsity and JV boys, they'll practice in their slot. There'll be a 15-minute gap to do some more cleaning, and then we'll bring the next set of teams in. At the end of the night, that's when the custodians will come in and do their, I'm gonna call it professional clean, with their spraying, the electric static sprayer, wiping down the high-touch points, et cetera. So, we went over those with John, Brett, Kelly, Mackenzie, and I think there's a certain level of comfort there. As we sit right now, there is no fans expected for indoor events. We have received a few emails from parents that have concerns about senior days. We are very sensitive to trying to make those happen. We are certainly trying to get this off the ground first, but the seniors are in our thought process of what we need to do. We have some streaming avenues to watch our games. Thanks to Mr. Libby, we've purchased the Huddle All School deal, so our Huddle camera streams live to YouTube. We had a lot of luck with volleyball streaming to TMHS Volleyball, and we have created a TMHS Basketball YouTube channel. So, all our basketball games will go to TMHS Basketball on YouTube. Brian Dorrington and the Cable Company was great in the fall. They intend on helping us with some basketball, and they intend on helping us with hockey. Live Barn is in most of the hockey rinks, and Live Barn, and Chris, you might be more of a hockey guy than me. I don't know if Live Barn is a subscription or it's free, but Live Barn is in breakaway in most of the rinks that we play in. So, parents will have access to Live Barn, as well as our home games. I'm working with Brian to try to get that squared away, so our home games will be on local cable. Any questions?
I'll stop. Mr. Cutlass, any questions?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just one, Mr. Druin, thank you. Looks like a great effort, and you put in tremendous amount of safeguards for the winter sports, appropriate and everything, thought of everything. But are you gonna evaluate? I'm sure you're gonna evaluate periodically in case there's any spread, because I noticed in the paper today, Westford, I don't think they're in the MVC though, they, they aren't gonna participate. Is that correct?
That's correct. And Jamie, for, for your peace of mind there, Mr. Malone and the superintendents, one of the athletic directors is the chair, and I'm the vice chair of the MVC, and I've sat in a couple superintendent meetings with Mr. Malone, and they, I, the way I have it kind of in my head is they're gonna bring us in in early January for kind of a report out to how the first three weeks have started prior to us playing our first contest. So, I think the superintendents have some safeguards built in, or they want, you know, periodic check-ins, let's call it, to make sure that everything is kind of safe, and there's not a lot of spread going on within teams and schools.
Right. Mr. Cutlass, I think what we're looking at is an initial phase of ramp up to practice, practice time in mid-December to make sure protocols are in place. We have appropriate PPE, appropriate scheduling for practice. Look at the flow of practices from mid-December to early January to see how all schools are handling all that, what is the impact of the pandemic on that. You're also looking at vacation weeks, where maybe the only activity in the buildings may be athletics. That could be a good thing, that may not be a good thing. So, those are the things we're going to examine. I think what we do have is a solid schedule and a solid plan, but we do have to be ready to adapt to where this pandemic takes us, and we also have to understand that there may be districts in the league that may not be able to participate and may not be able to do pieces. So, we will be monitoring that likely daily.
Circling back to Mrs. Demos's question, Mr. Malone just hit on something that I should have covered. The schedule is a six-week schedule, starting on January 11th. We are playing the same opponent, we're playing the same opponent weekly. It'll change, so the first week we play in North End, over the second week, we are playing Chelmsford. So, your opponent will stay consistent all week long. You'll play them a couple times in boys' hockey, a couple times in boys' basketball, a couple times in girls' basketball. Girls' ice hockey has a bunch of different co-ops, so that's a little bit of a different animal, and you'll play the same school in gymnastics. So, six weeks, twice a week, we're looking at a 12-game basketball schedule for all our basketball teams. We're looking at a 12-game boys' ice hockey schedule. We are looking at a 12-game girls' ice hockey schedule, and I believe our gymnastics team has an eight-match schedule. Eight meet, match, meet, eight-meat schedule for girls' gymnastics.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Druin. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Druin, and before I go to Mrs. Demos, yeah, no playoffs though, Mr. Druin?
At this, at this point, we, we hope to do a plus-one, which would be the last, you know, the first and second-place team in the conference. The schedule will end on, the schedule would end on a Friday, and we're hoping to circle back to the superintendents and do a plus-one, so first and second place would play for the league championship. So, there is something on the line. That would be it. We're not looking to do a full, there's no state tournament, if that's your question. If things go well, I think we would try to come back and do some sort of a smaller league championship, but right now, we're kind of gunning for a plus-one, which would be first and second place playing off against each other for a large school championship and a small school championship. That would be all I think we're gunning for right now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Druin. Over to Mrs. Demos?
Hi, thank you. So, you answered my playoff question and my schedule question, so that's good. I just was curious about, you had mentioned that Track and Field is going to do Fall Two, which is February 22nd to May 1st. So, can you just explain to me then, then what happens with the spring track? Will they start rate in May? Will it not be a spring track? How does that work with the Fall Two?
The spring season is, so Fall Two would run from February 22nd to May 1, and then Spring Track would start right up on May 1.
Okay.
In, in theory, Mrs. Demos, you're gonna get a, what is it, a four, four-and-a-half-month track season, if you're an indoor track person?
Okay.
You know, I, I would assume that the goal here would be to hope that things warm up a little bit in March, and you can run some of those meets outside.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You know, at this point, Reggie Lewis is not open, neither is BU, which is why they had to move track to Fall Two. I mean, yeah, yeah, indoor track to Fall Two.
Okay. I thought I had heard something about some of the throwers starting now in the winter or something, but it must be February that I was hearing. Okay.
It's Fall Two.
And then, will we reevaluate once this winter season comes as far as the spring? Or because there are a lot of outdoor sports, we don't have to worry about that just yet?
I certainly would circle back to you guys, anytime you want. I mean, Mr. Malone and Mr. Regan have been great resources for me. I check in with them multiple times a week. So, whatever you guys need for information, you know, any kind of recap, certainly we would do that. You know, I know today on the Board of Directors call, they are starting to work on the modifications for Fall Two, so they're starting to work on the football modifications, the cheer modifications, et cetera. So, they're already planning for Fall Two.
And then my, another question I had was, when you were mentioning the sanitizers out, I was trying to just take down some notes, and I, I think I might have missed it. Is it out on the bench, or when they come in and off the bench for basketball that they're gonna sanitize?
There'll be hand sanitizers at all the, all the corners of the gymnasium.
Okay.
And then, when it's game day, there'll be hand sanitizer on the scorer's table for anybody checking into the game, any referees that need it, any of our table workers that need it. And then the stations will, there'll be a hand sanitizing station in each mask break area, as well as the opposing corners of the gym. So, there'll be four corners of the gym, and the hand sanitizing stations will also be in the mask break areas.
Okay, and at the ref table for the people?
And at the referees table for anybody checking in, and or the referees and/or the scorers that are working the tables.
Okay, so they should have ample opportunity to get to sanitizer should they need it?
Absolutely. And then, circling back to that, the benches need to be six feet apart. So, I was in there yesterday with John and Mr. Patterson and Brett, and we're gonna try to model the NBA model with our benches. So, the scorer's table, at the scorer's table, we will have our 30-second clock and our, our game clock. Behind that, six feet will be the official book and the opposing book. Moving back forward to the front table, we gotta go six feet off that table, and we can get seven seats comfortably down the sidelines. We'll go six feet back and put seven seats back there, and we can go six feet back again and put the remaining, seven, seven, fourteen, four more. You can have 15 players and three coaches. That's the maximum number on your bench is 18. So, we need 18 seats on our bench areas, and we have enough room to do that without wrapping around the court or using the opposing bleachers, per se, which is what some schools are gonna do, is use the opposing bleachers.
Okay, so it's 18, including the coaching staff?
15 players and three coaches.
Okay.
And then in pre-game, you can only have 25 players on the court, so it's 12 and 12. If you're carrying a 15-person roster, you have to use your other three kids. We're gonna put some side baskets down, and they could shoot free throws, or they can do ball handling or whatever, but you can only have 12 go through warmups.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me that we have really kind of checked the boxes on our social distancing and, and safety protocols, right? And we just...
We're trying.
I think that you have a good schedule and check-in setup, so I feel confident that the kids in Tuxbury are going to get to benefit from these seasons, and I thank you for taking the time to do all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just wanna say thank you. I think it's a tremendous benefit to the kids in our community, and I know it's been probably, I can't even probably imagine the amount of work that's gone into it, but I think we've taken, or you've taken all the right steps, worked with all the right people to make sure that they're gonna be safe, and I think this is the right thing to do. So, thank you for that, those efforts.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Stadman. Yep, not better.
You're coming in kind of muffled. A little bit, yeah. Is everybody getting a muffled sign? Okay.
John, you're really muffled. I'll just wrap it up. Ronnie, great job. As Todd said, you know, I think it's great, the time and the effort to make sure we can get our student athletes out there. I'm very glad to hear we had a successful fall. I know we can keep it going in the winter and hopefully beyond. So, thank you again for all your efforts.
I, I appreciate your time. Chris has been, Mr. Malone has been great through this, as has Mrs. Regan. You know, they've, they got a lot of stuff on their plate, you know what I mean? And they always carve out the time to make it work for me, for athletics, you know? So, they're always great resources. And again, you know, at Chris's, with Chris's leadership, we put together that COVID checklist, and now the whole conference is using it. So, it's, it's a good thing to have. It's just an extra layer protection for everybody that we're all doing the right things and having the right protocols. And I, you know, we've had a lot of meetings with our coaches, and I feel comfortable that we're ready to go on Monday for tryouts, and we can keep everybody safe and do the best we can.
Great. Fantastic.
Thanks for having me, gang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna check in with Brian. Brian, do we have anyone for Citizens Forum this evening?
We have no one yet, Mr. Chairman, but I do expect we will have some people. And I'd just like to remind anybody who plans on calling in that if you hear a busy signal, that means someone else is on the line, and don't call multiple times in a row, because we'll make sure we, we get to you as soon as we can.
Okay, Brian, I'm just gonna turn it over to our approval of minutes, then I'll check right back in with you afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2020, regular school committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes on November 18th, 2020. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Microphone check, aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. The minutes are passed. Okay, I'm gonna check in with Brian.
Mr. Chairman, we have Deanna Mancini on the phone.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, Deanna.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Deanna Mancini. I live at 15 Kenneth Lane, and this is in regards to the school committee items of interest, since I feel like this is a topic that you shall have a vested interest in. I'm here as a private citizen, transparent voter, but also a parent, CPAC coacher, 20 yards of theater, with 12 years of experience as administrator. I'm speaking tonight in support of the TTA. I also want to express how frustrated I am and what I feel is the lack of objectivity on your part as elected officials. I was not surprised by what was in the TPA letter, since many of these concerns, concerns that parents have been raising with the school committee for years now. I know I personally have been raising concerns for at least three years. There's a troubling pattern of unprofessional conduct on the part of administrators that is not being adequately addressed. In addition, I'm troubled by the communication that's coming from the school committee. In your own policy guide, section AB, it states, and I quote, "The school committee therefore affirms and declares its intent to maintain two-way communications with citizens of the community. Two-way communication means you should be responding to parents and staff concerns in a timely manner, not ignoring parents or organizations who bring concerns to you that you don't support or agree with. For example, I personally sent an email on December 4th, and I have yet to receive a response. In your same policy guide, section BBAA, it states that one of your duties is to, and I quote, "Ask the committee impartially for the good of students, to represent the committee and the schools to the public in a way that promotes interest and support," end quote. I believe the chairman's letter, as well as subsequent correspondence, violated both of these guidelines. They were neither impartial, nor did they promote interest and support from the community. I feel that you simply criticize staff in an attempt to sway public opinion. If you truly believe that the TPA is in the wrong, then you owe it to the administration to conduct a full investigation. Since I feel you've shown a lack of objectivity, I feel the only path we can take is to hire an independent agency to investigate these concerns. Since teachers and parents have brought some more concerns forward, the independent agencies should be addressing both areas. I feel like a dark cloud is shadowing our school system, and as elected officials, you are beholden to those you represent, which includes me and those like me, not just the people who agree with you, to ensure there's a non-biased investigation of these concerns, so that we can all move forward in a positive direction. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Mancini, for your opinion. And I would just like to say, as a, as a comment to that opinion, I don't necessarily agree with that. On the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, actually, let me first start by saying, we have great teachers in Tuxbury. There's no question about that. We support our teachers. We've had, as a school committee, I thought, some very good relations with the We've had, as a school committee, I thought, some very good relations with the TTA. That has taken a bump in the road the day before Thanksgiving when a document was sent to us on the eve of a five-day holiday weekend. I can tell you and the public, Monday morning, my first priority was to go in and address the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to respond to all of those allegations and to get those responses, not only to myself, but to my four colleagues on the school committee so that we can look into this matter. I would hope that just like our teachers, our administration would be entitled to the same amount of respect where just because someone put something down and didn't agree with them, it would be taken upon face value. We are and continue to look into this matter. Myself and the vice chairman are attempting to set up a meeting with the union and will also be sitting down with the administration as well. As I said in my second letter, I am not looking to create a divisive issue here in the community. When people put things out in the public, we felt we had a responsibility to respond simply so that document did not become a matter of fact for some people. Our concern is, as I said in the follow-up that was just recently sent out, our priority is to make sure that we are doing what's in the best interest of all of our learners in Tewksbury Public Schools. With that, I'd like to open it up to any of my colleagues if they have anything to add. And I will start with Mr. Wilson.
I'll just briefly add. I know that our job is to be objective and that's what we intend to do, is to gather all the facts and all the information and then make an intelligent decision, which is, I don't know, it's what I've done in my life. So I'm confident that I'm capable of doing that. It's unfortunate that some see us as not being objective because we wanted to provide all the information to the residents. And then the only other thing I would mention is I thought I heard the caller say that there wasn't a response to her email. And on December 6th, I did send her a response, including the committee and including Senator Feingold and Representative Robertson, because those people were included on that response. So absolutely got the email, heard the concerns, responded to them. Sorry that you're not comfortable with how we're handling it, but we're going to gather the information and we will move forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Cutlass?
Sorry, it's me again, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Cutlass has the floor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with everything you said, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Wilson as well. I will say that we do have outstanding teachers here in the town of Tewksbury. You know, my kids went through the schools in Tewksbury, received an outstanding education and went on to do well in college and everything after that. So we have outstanding teachers. I do also want to say that we're going to look into these allegations, like you said, but up until this point in time, and it's my belief that we have an outstanding superintendent and we have an outstanding assistant superintendent. And I think the parents and the children and the families in the town of Tewksbury are fortunate that we have these two administrators working on their behalf as hard as they have every single day. I know for a fact that since this pandemic began, that they've worked day and night to do the best things they possibly could for every single family and student in this town. And there's no doubt in my mind that they'll continue to do the best they can for, on behalf of every family, and that we're very lucky to have them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have much to say regarding this topic. I feel as though people are rushing to judgments that are unfair. I myself was a member of the TTA for 19 years and know firsthand the incredible teachers that are in this district. I've had two children go through this district, one which has graduated and one which is a senior. I couldn't be prouder of this town and of our school system. I am their biggest cheerleader. I am receiving emails that have opinions in hurtful language, quite honestly. I am doing due diligence, fact-finding and investigations before I come in front of this town and make any decisions publicly. I follow the chain of communication and I do so in a respectful manner. If anyone has any questions or comments, please reach out to me personally. But I am working diligently to fact-find and to have meaningful conversations with various stakeholders. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos and Mr. Stadman.
Just want to also also say that, you know, continue with with Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Demos, I don't rush to judgment along with this. You know, it's one of those things where I pride myself on, you know, both professionally and personally. It's one of those things where whether it's he said, she said thing. Again, there's been a lot of things just kind of thrown out there. And again, we need time to, again, investigate and find things out. So again, we need to take some time and be patient with all of this. Again, I know there's stress and everything and, you know, with COVID. I can't say it enough, teachers are amazing people. Personally, I couldn't do it. My family, my wife's family is all teachers. I say that to them all the time. Again, I, like I said, I couldn't do it and you can't pay them enough. And I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Brian, do we have any other callers?
We have no other callers yet, Mr. Chairman, but as normal, we are about a minute behind.
Okay. Turn it over to Mrs. Demos for the submission of payment of bills.
Mr. Chair, I move the payroll ending November 25th, 2020 in the amount
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll pay period ending November 25th, 2020 in the amount of 1,384,876.72. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. The bills are approved. I'll go back to you, Brian, before I go to the superintendent's report.
We have no more callers, Mr. Chairman, and I can say we are caught up at this point.
Okay, great. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malone for his superintendent report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick updates, particularly response to COVID and some discussions on the reopening task force as we do meet every Monday. The community of Tewksbury has moved into the red. As we discussed last month, there were some new metrics put out by DESE. Basically, to move into the red, a community would have to have over 42 per 100,000 identified individuals over two-week period average test positive in a 5% positivity rate. Currently, as of last week, Tewksbury is running at an average daily incident rate of 49.6. So that's above the 42 in a 5.22% positivity rate, which is just above the 5. So certainly it's reflective of the state in the country as far as the numbers of these cases that are coming up. Many of our surrounding school districts are also in the same situation. We'll continue to monitor these numbers. When we get to Ms. Regan's report, she's going to talk about a new method by which we will message out some of these numbers that specifically reflect within the school. Even since last week, we've had 13 positive cases. What is a little bit unique to this is that we are finding the predominance of our cases are coming up in that the students or and or staff members who are testing positive in most cases have not been in school for at least a week and don't have any close contacts. So certainly that's reflective of the precautions that everyone's taking, staying home when sick. Certainly, if they have a family member who is sick or positive, to stay home. So certainly individuals are adhering to that. We're certainly very appreciative of that. Our staff are doing a great job. Our principals are doing a great job in regards to holding on to the protocols specific with the mask wearing, six feet apart, hand washing. Our cleaning protocols are being at hand, too. We think these are the biggest reasons why we have not seen a spread in the schools. So we hope to continue with that. We will keep a close eye on those numbers throughout the town as part of the task force and what impact that has on the schools. But again, one of the biggest aspects that we're seeing is that with individuals following the established safety protocols, it is really limiting the spread of this, which we have no evidence of in schools of yet. And of 13 cases since last week, we only had one situation where there was a close contact. So again, thank you to everyone who's following those precautions at home, staff members at work. Certainly, there's evidence there that is having an impact on our safety. Today, Assistant Superintendent Reagan and myself participated in a call with the DESE Commissioner. What he had formally announced was that educators will be in phase two of the vaccine rollout. So there will be a priority to educators after healthcare workers and emergency services workers to make vaccinations available to educators. Roughly, the commissioner reported that they're anticipating that vaccine to be available somewhere between February and April. On another vaccine front, our nurses are working diligently on the flu vaccines that were initially required by DESE under Department of Public Health recommendations. The commissioner reported today that although that requirement by December 31st has not been lifted, he is actively advocating for a delay in that implementation and requirement for flu vaccine. I would say one of the significant parts that he identified that certainly we see here in Tewksbury is that our school nurses are doing such diligent and extensive work on contact tracing and prevention of this pandemic that they've had limited time to follow through and follow up on flu vaccinations. But we certainly encourage all families to make sure your children are getting that flu vaccination, getting that flu shot. We do think it's an important safety piece. But we will have to see where the final determination by DESE stands with that requirement on December 31st. We were happy also to receive from Department of Education Associate Commissioner Russell Johnson our report back on our disproportionately, significant disproportionately in special education report, which is a report from our information system that looks at student safety and discipline reports and examines it for trends in disproportionately being applied to special education students, minority students, low-income students. And our report over that three-year period of time showed no findings from the state, which means that they did not find any disproportionality in that statistic. So that was certainly good news for all of us. In addition, just to update on a couple of special education issues, some of the things we've talked about within the hybrid model and numbers of students in school on certain days. One piece that we've been working very diligently on, particularly other special education department, is we have 98 special education students who are coming to school four days a week in person. They have been identified under the criteria by DESE as high needs. Our staff has done an outstanding job working with that, not only with dedication for those students because of their needs, but also to work with the nursing staff and the cleaning staff to make sure that we're taking the appropriate precautions throughout the week, not just on alternating cohorts. So with 98 special education students attending four days a week and we're looking at increasing that where we can, that is, to increase that, we certainly have to ensure we have the staffing and the cohorting ability to do that. We continue to look at that. We've also got an additional 11 EL students who are also getting more than two days per week of instruction. They've also fallen to the high needs piece. So we're very proud of that. And a new element in regards to that from the special education department, one piece that has been certainly affected by this pandemic is our ability to provide home services for students and families during this pandemic, where our staff members would go into the home and provide those home services. Clearly, through this pandemic, that has not been possible. What the special education department was looking at an alternative way to provide that in Wednesday afternoons after school, they're actually having, at this point, five students who are receiving home services at school. So they're coming back, they're staying at school or coming back to school, receiving the same service they would receive in their home, but they're receiving it in the school where we can control the cleaning and safety protocols. So that's a big success story and we hope to keep that going. A quick thank you to the TMHS Theatre Company for their virtual performance of Romeo and Juliet, which started on last Friday night and it's available on YouTube. I was able to see not all the performance, but parts of it. And just a great example of how our students are persevering during this pandemic and able to do a virtual theater production, high-quality theater production. Just a real tip of the hat to the staff and students involved in that to keep those type elements going. Also, a huge thank you to DESE, in particular, Tewksbury resident, Ms. Amory Stronik, who works at DESE. We will be receiving between 2,000 and 3,000 youth-size masks and 1,500 adult-size cotton masks for distribution to our district free of charge from DESE. And that distribution for the northeast part of the state is actually taking place in Tewksbury at our rec center. But again, thank you to DESE. Thank you through the coordination from Stronik. And we'll have those available. We're not 100% sure what the distribution approach will be, but they will be available right away for anyone in need. Also, congratulations to our grant writing, Dr. Bastieri, in regards to the social emotional grant for $20,000 we received from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to provide professional development for staff specific to integrate social emotional skills in content area classrooms. So that's certainly something we're very proud of moving forward. We received a nice letter from the Veterans Administration in Bedford for the K-4 students that provided cards and letters to veterans just before Thanksgiving. And a very nice thank you for that and a great job by our K-4 students and staff providing that opportunity to certainly support our veterans. Also, just a quick follow-up on some budget items. The current budget sits on the governor's desk at this point. The impact of the current budget that sits there, which could be changed, but at this point, what we're looking at is somewhat of level funding on the foundation budget in the municipal contribution portion, maybe a slight increase. The Chapter 70 money has been reverted back and still is within that budget to the 2020 rate of just over $13 million. So that would mean that we would have no actual increase at all in Chapter 70 money in basically a straight line with the foundation budget and matching contribution. So we certainly remain- So we certainly remain concerned about the outlook of the budget for next year. I think through the diligence of Mr. Libby and the administration and the staff, they've done a great job making sure we're spending responsibly during this pandemic, utilizing appropriate federal COVID money, appropriate state COVID money. But the long-range picture on the budget is not only concerning for this budget of the budget year we're in, but for our next year moving forward. So we're going to have to be very thoughtful about that. And we're going to have to make sure we are certainly managing these finances effectively. And just finally, one last thank you to all our school nurses who have just been doing an outstanding job, particularly interacting with parents who may have to talk through scenarios where themselves or family members are testing positive or are close contacts. They're providing comfort, they're providing clear instruction and feedback, and they're really encouraging all of our families and students to continue to follow the appropriate protocols. And they've really built strong relationships with staff members, with students and with families. And there's none of this we could be doing without our school nurses just doing an outstanding job. That completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I'll open it up to my colleagues. I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
Oh, no, I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. House?
All set. Thank you for that report, Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Chris.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Great. And Mr. Malone, I just have one question. Those 98 special ed students coming four days a week, you talked about, is any of them going Wednesday currently? Or is just the five students coming from the four other day?
It's a great question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So it is the five students who are kind of receiving the modified home services at school. We might have a couple scenarios where students might be reserving their individual services on a Wednesday, but right now, no, they are going, the four days they're going are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'd like to turn it over now to Mrs. Reagan for the Assistant Superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few updates this meeting. Let me just start by, and I see that Principal Cronin is still with us. I know she'll be smiling at this update. The last week of November, we received an email from the National Assessment Governing Board announcing the postponement of the spring 2021 NAEP test this year. And they will not reschedule that until the spring of 2022. The reason Ms. Cronin is probably smiling is because the North Street School was lucky enough to be chosen to participate in the fourth grade NAEP test. The NAEP test is given every two years, approximately every two years, and the data feeds the nation's report card. I can tell you Massachusetts does very well on the NAEP test. In fact, Principal Ware, I think, is still online and they, when middle school and grade eight has participated in the NAEP. So once again, our students were spared the test administration of the NAEP for the spring of 2021. In your consent agenda, you see our annual letter that goes out to families about our Seal of Bili literacy program. So I ask any parents or students that are watching, if you are fluent and literate in English and another language, or more than one other language, you may qualify for the Seal of Bili literacy. This is a nationally recognized award and is delivered at graduation. And it's evidenced by proficiency in the Massachusetts English Language Arts MCAS as well as another proficiency language test in either a second or third language or even a home language. Any student or family who is interested in the Seal of Bili literacy should contact Ms. Graca Dudley at the Tewksbury Memorial High School. And the letter that went home to parents also has the Tewksbury Seal of Bili literacy website on it. Okay, I'm going to share my screen if it pleases you, Mr. Chairman, because I'd like to show some updates to our school calendar as I have each of our meetings. So let me share the screen. And here we go. All right. Hold on. Are you seeing my screen? Okay. You should be seeing the district calendar now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Once again, I just want to walk parents or anyone that's watching through our dynamic district calendar and the features. We can see we are open right up to December, and parents need to just be reminded, there is a filter feature. So you can see I have checked off the high school calendar in the district. District calendar will put up schedules for the district, changes in cohort scheduling or district information, and then schools will put up information that's specific to the school. So I'm going to leave those two filters on because I'd like to just draw everybody's attention to the week of December 21st through the 25th, the beginning of December recess. When we looked at all the cohort days over the whole year, we tried to balance each quarter and balance each, balance overall in-person hybrid cohort time for all students to be equitable. These two days, Monday, the 21st and the 22nd, we needed to bring in both cohorts. Let me just explain, on Monday, December 22nd, Cohort A will show up per normal for the full day for their, it's a hybrid day and it's for Cohort A students. On Tuesday, we will be bringing in our Cohort B students. So both students get in-person learning time prior to the winter recess. Parents and the whole community should know there'll be a deep cleaning of all of the schools on Monday night so that again, we maintain the health and safety protocols between each of the cohorts. Wednesday, per usual, will be, where are we? Right here? Will be a full remote day for all learners, but it's an early release day. December 23rd is an early release day for our students, and the second half of the day is workshop time for our teachers. So once again, parents, please click the district filter and you can see any scheduling for the district as well as for the schools and any changes that may happen in the scheduling. The schools will be sending home their school newsletters if they have not already, communicating this change in the cohort schedule. We'll also be doing several district tweets as well as one call now and blanket emails so that however you get your news from us, you should get it in one of those modes. I'm going to then move on to the next piece of information, and that takes me to January. And that is our high school PSAT annually. And thank you again to the school committee. You graciously fund the PSATs for our juniors and seniors who desire to take the PSAT. You can see this year, it is scheduled for Tuesday, January 26th. So the high school will be in full remote learning on Tuesday, January 26th so that we can administer the PSATs safely. Our plan is to separate the cohorts, Cohort A, B, C, and RLA juniors or sophomores that have chosen to take the PSAT. Currently, we have a total of about 150, predominantly juniors and some sophomores who will be taking the test. A majority of our high school teachers will be helping to proctor this test because we will be having students take this socially distanced, separated in many small groups. There's still some planning to do, but I wanted this on people's radar now because this will be a full remote day for all students who are not participating in the PSATs at the high school only. It remains a Cohort A day for grades K through 8, but I just want to reiterate, it is a full remote day for students at the high school who are not participating in the PSAT tests. Parents and students can expect more information from Principal John Bernard as well as from the teachers, once they've identified their schedules for that day. Okay. The next update is also in your consent agenda. I'm going to have you go to the student enrollment. What you usually get from us is this first page, and this is an updated early December student enrollment per school and per grade level. If you go to the next page, you can see that there is the staffing at all of our schools. Our teachers are listed there. But what we've now included and will continue to include is the enrollment. But you can see the small, it should be red, it looks burgundy, numbers. That accounts for our updated RLA student enrollment. And we thought it would be important to continue to put this because these are fluid. Enrollment is fluid and we want you to see those numbers monthly. But I also, in response, Ms. Demos had asked at the last meeting, if we could look at staffing per RLA enrollment and staffing per our hybrid cohorts. So what we've put together here is a table. It represents the enrollment numbers, but we've broken it down by the model that parents have chosen for their students' learning as well as trying to pull out what are those average class sizes looking at, looking like. So we can start here. Let me just scroll to the Heathbrook. I think you have a typo, by the way, in the first column of your RLA average class size. I think it says 19. That number changed when we updated the enrollment for the packet. So let me walk through this a little for anyone who's looking at the document. What we did was we took each of the grade levels per school. We identified by current enrollment, how many RLA students are in that grade level. And then per your request, Ms. Demos, how many teachers do we have that staff the RLA? So for example, you can see at the Heathbrook, we have 20 RLA K students, 17 grade 1, 14 grade 2. We have two teachers that teach all three of those grade levels with one RLA aide. If you look at the Cohort A, B, and C students, we've then identified how many hybrid number of teacher homerooms there are per grade level. And then the last three columns show you what those class size averages are. So for example, here, the averages are what they are because the teachers take those classes one at a time. If we look at the hybrid average total number of students, so for example, at the Heathbrook kindergarten, the total Cohort A, B, and if C are integrated into the hybrid class, the total class the teacher has is 14.8, so roughly 15 students. And if you break that down, what's the average class size in person? You would have, for example, here, maybe seven Cohort A students on Monday and Tuesday while the others are remote, and then the opposite Cohort B, eight in person, while the others are remote. We've broken the numbers down like that at each school, and you can see there was some significant RLA class sizes that we have been dealing with since the start of school and as these enrollments have increased. So what we saw and now has been rectified, for example, what they're doing. Up until last week, these 44 RLA kindergarten students had one teacher and one aide, which was a class size, obviously, that was unacceptable. And now we have attained a second RLA kindergarten teacher. So you can see again, as you look at the different schools, what those RLA class size averages are in comparison to our hybrid class average, and then obviously the individual in-person cohort class averages. Another area that is currently being looked at at the Ryan School now that we have an agreement with our teachers as far as how to manage equitable class sizes with our RLA is looking at the Ryan School RLA class sizes. Currently, right now, you can see their average class sizes with the staffing they currently have is large, especially large in comparison to the hybrid, but concerning at grade 6. So Ms. McGinnis and the RLA teachers are looking at ways to help and affect class size there with maintaining the teachers that the kiddos have grown to know. I guess before I move on to my updates, I would say, are there any questions on the enrollment piece?
I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
No, Mr. Chair, thank you. I can see the numbers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos.
Sorry, I was unmuting. So thank you, Brenda, for this information. It really, I can now visualize, you know, the equity and inequities that we're working to rectify. The plan is currently in place to find some support staff for these grades 5, 6 RLA teachers. Is that what you just said? I just wanted to clarify.
Yes. Yes, the principal's currently working with her staff and specialist staff to see how they can add instructional teachers to those large groups.
Right. Maybe we can be creative with our scheduling if there's any empty blocks or something to support even in those core academic areas of their day. I look forward to the further updates and thank you very much for this very intricate report. It's much appreciated.
Thank you. And if you feel like this report, we should update each month, we're happy to do that. We pull the numbers right out of Aspen.
I would appreciate that so that, you know, we can see that there is movement in the right direction and just, you know, have little things to celebrate each time, right? It's getting better.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Great. Mrs. Stadman?
Ms. Reagan, I appreciate you pulling these numbers together. Definitely show some clarity with the discrepancies that we were hearing about, but knowing that the principals are working to fill all those gaps is good news. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Mrs. Reagan?
Okay, and I think before I turn the page, I think it's just so important to just praise and be so proud of the work. I mean, we've never done this before, right? We've had remote learning in the past, we have remote learning now, it's different. And parents are ecstatic at the work that the teachers are doing, and we couldn't be more proud. I mean, when you think about, you know, just the challenges they faced implementing a remote learning academy and then large class sizes, we're really, really just proud of all of the work and hard work, diligence and dedication to making this work for our families. So we thank them. For any of them that are listening, thank you very much. All right. The next piece of our update is the tracker that Superintendent Malone was talking about, so let me expand my screen. Well, parents have been used to weekly letters from the superintendent's office and staff getting memos from their principals that update the current active cases in our schools. Some enjoy those letters quite a bit and some do not and will prefer that they have a way to find the information, not necessarily get weekly long letters to read from us. So we've, through the help of our IT Director Jason Stamp and certainly Kelly Constantino, identified some key information that should go into our district-wide tracker that parents can pull up at any time and track their own school or the district. So let me just walk you through a little bit. This will be a weekly COVID-19 dashboard for the district. You can see right now, the Tewksbury Public Schools has a total of 18 active cases. And these cases will include school community members. So it does not differentiate between students and staff. It's 18 active cases within our schools. So if you look at first the current active cases, and let me get our faces out of here a little bit. The current active cases, I'll look at the Ryan School, there are four current active. And then two of those active have occurred within the last seven days. So what we'll continue to do is update that week look and that you'll see current active fall off or grow depending on what happens within the seven-day period. All right. Those are all of our schools. If we look over to the left, we have also provided those very helpful and informative links that we've shared with you in the past, the Stop the Spread Guidebook, the Tewksbury Stop the Spread Flyer. And then I just want to click on this link, which is the Everything You Need to Know During the COVID-19 State of Emergency in Tewksbury. This is the link that would take, you know, a community member or a parent to what's going on in the town of Tewksbury. So remember when I said active cases in our school are students and staff together? The Tewksbury site is Tewksbury residents only. So our students would contribute to the active cases in Tewksbury, but our staff may not, only if they are Tewksbury residents. So I just wanted to differentiate that there is multiple ways to look at the Tewksbury data through the tracker, our school, and then going to that link to look at the town. Parents often ask, what's the difference between suspected COVID-19 or positive COVID-19? So we've put some of these key definitions here. Quarantining, isolation, what's a close contact? I can tell you, and then from some feedback we received from a parent on the task force, they wanted a place where some new dates would occur. So rather than maybe getting a long So rather than maybe getting a long email, a long document from us, we could put new updates here. I can tell you, in the next couple of days, people should expect to see new updates on the quarantine protocols that have come out from the Department of Public Health, but will also be clarified through a DESI document. So we'll be putting that here. For now, parents will be contacted by their school nurse or Kelly Constantino, and they will absolutely explain, our school nurses and Ms. Constantino, explain what the quarantine looks like for each of their children. Should I, are there any questions on the tracker, Mr. Chairman, or should I move on?
You can just go through the whole report and we'll go through at the end. Thank you.
Okay, sure. And just again, this tracker should be posted to our website by Friday of this week and we'll communicate out to all parents that we've done so. All right. And the last of my update also involves the Zoom call that both Chris and I were on today with the Commissioner of Education, as well as with the Massachusetts Superintendents. And that, this revolves around that structured learning time audit. I explained to you, I think in our last meeting, in November, we submitted an audit to the Department of Education on our structured learning time. What does that mean? That means we submitted, per our hybrid approved schedules, how much time our students were spending in in-person learning, asynchronous learning, synchronous learning, and full remote learning in grades one, four, seven, and ten. DESI has taken and disseminated that data and is close to reporting back to districts what the data meant for them. I can tell you, they've categorized districts in two different buckets, if you will. Districts that have hybrid and all in-person learning. So you have in-person learning at multiple grade levels and districts that are full remote without in-person. We obviously fall in the first bucket. And then, once they looked at our structured learning time, we will get categorized as either clearing a minimum criteria or not clearing. The minimum criteria, exact numbers has not been confirmed, but potentially, for a district like ours, the minimum criteria is that every student participates in a minimum of thirty-five in-person or synchronous learning hours over a ten-day span. So you can think about that over two weeks. And that's a number that, right now, again, has not been confirmed, but we expect that is what we're going to be compared against. We don't know if we've cleared that based on the average data we gave them or not. We'll receive that feedback when we get the report. Our goal, obviously, is to get the report and make whatever corrections we need to clear that minimum criteria for structured learning time for our students. So I look forward to sharing the report with you once we receive it. And that concludes my updates.
Great. Thanks, Mrs. Regan. Mr. Cutlass, any questions?
No, Mr. Chair. Just thank Mrs. Regan, and I do like the dashboard. I think that's helpful for everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Demos?
Hi, Brenda. I may have missed it. Did you let us know who is updating that COVID tracker?
Okay. Well, we have a different app that actually tracks our cases that we, you know, were so blessed with Jason Stamp to help put all of these ideas into some type of technology, right? So our nurses have a tracker at each school that they use that track COVID-related sick and whether it's positive. It's confidential, but that data then is now fed into this dashboard.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Tracker's been in place for a few weeks. And now it's feeding, it's actually feeding now. It will now feed that dashboard.
Okay. So that's a tech step above me. I was thinking we had a human putting that in. I'm good with that. I was just curious who was taking that under their wing. But thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Stadman?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Great. I would just like to, I think that dashboard's a wonderful idea and my gratitude to the task force for getting behind that. I think it's going to be a much easier way for parents to take a look exactly where we are. So if you could please extend my gratitude, that would be greatly appreciated. And we're going to move on to our business manager, Mr. Libby.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple quick updates on one project that's currently underway at the Heathbrook School and one we hope to get underway for next summer at the Heathbrook. The first is a lighting retrofit project that's going on right now at the school through the, through a grant provided through the town's Green Committee. We're retrofitting about ninety percent of the light fixtures in the school with LED lighting from our old fluorescent fixtures. Should provide a much nicer light source for students and staff in most of the school learning spaces in the Heathbrook School. That project's being done literally as we speak. They're working second shift. And it's ongoing right now. The second project is our Heathbrook window replacement project that we've been working with our town architect firm. Just tried to come up with a scope of work and some bid specs. The process has to happen now so we can stay in line with the, with the schedule to, to stay in line with our procurement obligations as a town to get a, to get a price together and hopefully get that project underway this summer if all, all the chips fall in the right place. I have some photos I'd like to share of what the scope of the project will be. Share my screen here. Can you see that? Okay? Okay. So we took some pictures of the outside and inside of these windows that are currently at the school. So we can just show the sort of the need that we saw when we were replacing our doors a couple summers ago. We realized that the windows were in really rough shape there as well. All fogged, this plexiglass is all fogged. So our first thought was, hey, could we put glass in place of this plexiglass? Our window folks and our architect team determined that these frames that are holding the windows in place, they're made of steel, which isn't a real good thermal material. And they recommended we replace the whole structure rather than just the glass. So basically, the plan that was, has been developed and we're hoping to move forward with is to take this whole section out of the exterior wall of the school and replace it with what's called a storefront. That's, a storefront is an aluminum-framed product that's manufactured off-site and brought to the site, basically, and just pops in place of all this space after this has been removed by the contractor. So that's sort of the, the process we're hoping to get bids on over the next few weeks. The inside, this is some shots, some pictures of the inside view. Looking out, as you can see here, you really can't see anything out of these windows anymore. They're very limited, opening operable windows in each classroom. And we hope to address that with this project as well. This is another classroom. Again, fogged windows. We noticed our blinds are in quite rough shape, very old. So as part of the project, we're including in the scope replacement of the blinds as well to provide, be able to provide some control over the light that does come into the room to help with some temperature control and light control as well when we hit those warmer summer months. Again, this is another picture of the fogged glass. You really can't see in or out. Each of these classrooms has a heater, heating unit that runs the length of the wall inside. The depth of the new product would require replacement of these classroom countertops, which are pretty old and in need of repair as well. So that's also in the scope of this project would be, would be a replacement of the tops of these, these countertops in each of these classrooms. So as far as the, which classrooms would fall into this category, there's two types of classrooms at the Heathbrook. These, the classrooms that we're talking about here are highlighted here in green. It's basically the whole second-grade wing and a good portion of the kindergarten wing. These classrooms that aren't included in the scope of this project are what we call the greenhouse rooms. They're, they have a different structure. We are working with this same architecture firm on a, on a plan to address those windows as well. But for now, we're, we're trying to tackle these twenty classrooms, which is about seventy-five percent of the classrooms at the Heathbrook School. So this is just a picture that we took of the, the outside of the school. And this is the architect's rendering of what the, the new look will be with, with the new, the new window products in place. Couple of features that you'll see here. This, each classroom will have eight operable windows in the center section. The windows are designed to only open up six inches as a security measure, but they will provide, you know, much more airflow than we currently have. Another feature that we kind of built into this project were solid panels in each classroom, which would be able to be fitted for current air-conditioned rooms and potential for adding air conditioners in the future if we have student-staff needs or have the ability to add some air conditioning down the road. So those are, that's what the hopeful finished product will look like at the Heathbrook School for those classroom wings. So just a summary, aluminum framework, which is more thermally, thermal, thermally proficient. Tempered glass is, will also be spec'd in the project to keep us away from any vandalism concerns. Eight operable windows in each class, solid panels or air conditioning units. Replace the classroom countertops and blinds. Basically, the scope of the project will be advertising. Sharing here. We'll be advertising in the next few weeks, accepting bids early in January of twenty-one and hoping to be able to move on that project next summer. So that concludes my report for the committee.
Great. Thank you. Let me, Mr. Cutlass, any questions or comments?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Libby. I just, just, I guess we all, do, do we have that money set aside? And we, do we know how much it's going to be, Mr. Libby?
Well, the early estimate from the architecture, which we need to include in the advertising, was eight hundred thousand dollars. That's really going to be the deciding factor for us as we get closer to having to make a decision on this.
Yeah. Is that going to be in our budget for May? Or is it going to be a separate, like Warren article?
That is to be determined. We're not sure exactly of the financing just yet, but we need to, because of the timing of, of the production of those, those units and the timing that it takes to get a bid like this put out to the public and properly executed, we need to start the project now. It is in the bid spec that it's subject to funding, as with all public projects. But we're going to make that clear with our, our potential bidders that the whole project is subject to funding before we, before we move forward with any commitments.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Libby. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Libby. This is definitely a much needed project and well overdue, if I should say so. I'm wondering, you talked about the thickness of the glass in the heater, and we're replacing the countertops because of this issue. Will there be an issue between the glass and the heater itself? Is there any sort of more, anything constructional wise that we need to do with that in order to keep the glass in the heater? It, it's going to be safe for the kids and it's the staff in that room?
Yeah. The, the crux of the problem was really the, the depth of the new, the new unit. The old steel that's there and the windows were, were very thin. From a depth perspective.
Okay.
So the, the new aluminum is, is, I think, a minimum of about four inches is deep. So it was going to bump into those countertops. Anyway, which is, which is really prompting us to, to have to replace those countertops.
Yeah. And, yeah, I was just trying to visualize, you know, how thick you were meaning. Would, would you have thought maybe, the greenhouse rooms really just, I, I do not want to leave them out of this bid. I mean, having lived there for fifteen years, I know that the impact it has on the student learning. And there's just no circulation in a time like this, right?
Right.
Could we maybe get a bid that includes the greenhouse? Or even, you know, maybe ACs with all the panels in all of those? If we're not going to do the, the complete windows for those greenhouse rooms? I just feel like maybe if we put it into one big bulk bid, maybe we'd get a better deal than to have it separated into two jobs?
Right. I think, Ms. Demos, we, so we, this initiated three years ago by actually looking and prioritizing the greenhouse rooms. That's where the initial issue went to and what we were looking at. One of the issues with the greenhouse classrooms is that that is a glass wall and is a structural and weight-bearing wall. So the scope of that project would be actually to construct almost basically a third of the classroom new in each one of those places. Some of our initial estimates that we received over the past couple of years are certainly very high and they would not address things like the HVAC or some of the aging floors in those rooms. One of the other aspects we're looking at within this plan is that, for instance, at the Heathbrook, what, what would likely coincide with seventy-five percent of the classrooms receiving new windows would be the entire second grade moving out of the school and going to the new school. So that the preponderance of students in the Heathbrook would actually able to be in classrooms with newly outfitted windows. I think we'll still look at some of those pieces within the greenhouse rooms. But right now, what we're, we've seen as far as the architect's initial look at that, and we've had a few different firms in, in the past couple of years, is that the, it is a complete wall. It is not a window system. It's a wall and it's load-bearing. And it interconnects with the HVAC system. So once we start going that level into the design, it gets significantly expensive.
Oh, I'm sure. And we don't have the budget for that, but I also don't think that we should be ignoring those rooms. I think that we need to make sure that we're taking and being fiscally responsible, but making sure that we're planning for the future for the learning and that's going to occur in those rooms. So I like the idea that you said that the K, you know, pre-KK1 students could, the bulk of them would fit into these new, the classes with the new windows and that maybe we can use the greenhouse rooms for not homeroom classrooms. That would be more like a specialist library or something that's not used at all times or something. I don't know. We have to be creative. But I really do think that we need to spend some time and think about, you know, are we going to get effective AC units in there or something? If we're going to continue to use them with the students.
Yeah. Mrs. Demos, that is on the, the plate of our architectural consultant and engineer. They, they have been in those rooms and they've, they're, they're, they are working on a solution that we can bring forward. they're they're they are working on a solution that we can bring forward. This was a sort of a bang-for-your-buck type of deal. We knew we could get more rooms done with this solution. And that was a whole different set of problems in those in those greenhouse rooms.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I mean, the Heathbrook and the Dewing are going to be using their buildings for some time now. We need to make sure that, you know, we're taking good care of them and making it so that everyone is capable and able to be learning and doing their best every day.
Absolutely.
So thank you for looking into that for me. I just figured if we can get it all into one bid or get some ideas that we can kind of make better decisions when it comes to the budget.
Thanks, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
I'm all set. I am having some technical difficulties.
Okay.
So bear with me if you can't hear me that well.
Okay, Mr. Stadman?
No, my questions were answered with brought up by Jamie and Shannon, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Libby. I appreciate your update and your report. Moving on to the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding tonight's consent agenda? I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
No, Mr. Chair, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
No, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Stadman?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wilson? All right, and what is the pleasure of the board regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'll try to get Mr. Wilson. How do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Vote aye as well. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to committee reports, we will start with Mr. Cutlass, the Yellowberry School Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brief, as usual, I can make them more lengthy in the springtime, but right now, as you drive by, you see the steel frame being constructed and Consigly's working very quickly on that. And I'll just say that right now, we continue to be on time and on budget. That's the most important thing for us right now, so that concludes my report at this time.
Great, on time and on budget, always great to hear. I have no update regarding the Education Foundation. Mr. Wilson, do you have an update for the C-PAC?
I I do. Bear with me here. I just got to pull up. Can you hear me all right?
I can.
Okay, great. So I got an email from Dina Mancini. The Tuck's Ray Education PAC hosted a very well-attended parent support group on November 19th. Parents were able to discuss issues and raise concerns in a confidential and supportive environment. Since this group was a was such a success, they will be hosting another one in the new year. They are currently taking a break from meetings for the holidays. The next scheduled meeting will be on January 24th at 7:00 and it will be a virtual meeting. And if folks would like to add agenda items, they can send an email to tucksperrysepac@gmail.com.
Great. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you for that update. And Mr. Stadman, I assume like the rest of us not meeting, there's no Wellness Advisory Committee update?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
We have a MCAS update. I believe that's Mrs. Regan.
That is. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Well, it's not often I give you an update about MCAS and we're so happy, but this update, and I highlighted the key points for you, shares with you. If you remember at last meeting, I informed the board that all juniors who were sophomores last year when the MCAS was canceled were going to need to take the ELA and Math MCAS to achieve competency determination in order to get a diploma. That was scheduled, at least the first administration of those two MCAS tests were scheduled for January. And you can see that the scheduling of that test administration, or both of them, will be postponed till later in the year. So we knew this is going to be quite a challenge to schedule that level of MCAS testing in January, including, as you saw, the scheduling of our PSATs. What we are still looking at, and you see in the update, is those two to three. We're still identifying whether it's two or three seniors that will need to take their MCAS test. We would like them to take them in January just in case there's any issue. We don't want to be at risk with those students not getting competency determination and receive the diploma come June. And then also very exciting news is Desi has extended the window of access testing from January 7th through now May 20th of 2021. This is very exciting news. We know so many of our students have lost some time in learning and students struggling with English language really need that extra time. So we appreciate this MCAS update. And while the high school principals and assistant principals aren't on board, I can tell you, we're all very happy in this change.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. And my apologies, I inadvertently went over the policy changes. Last meeting, we did have a first thing, homeschooling policy due to the feedback that we received from some parents. We're looking back to that policy to address some areas that have been brought to our attention. So if anyone has any additional comments or concerns regarding that policy, you can reach out to either the superintendent or Mrs. Demos or Mr. Stadman, who are on the policy committee. I'd like to now ask Mr. Cutlass if he has any comments or concern regarding the MCAS update.
No, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm all set.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos.
Nope, all set. Thanks.
Mr. Wilson?
All set at this time.
Okay, and Mrs. Stadman?
I'm all set as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have no questions as well. Moving on to new business, we have the end of term one parent survey that went out.
Yep, thank you again, Mrs. Chairman. So in front of you, in the packet, you have the actual survey, the end-of-term one parent survey. We continue to promise our parents, we need feedback from them, and they help us guide our our next steps with our students. So we tried to keep this short and sweet. We had about 1,700 survey responses. I'm going to share my screen because, again, I have a dynamic data studio to show you. Let me see if this is going to work. Here we go. All right. As soon as that goes away, let me there we go, maximize the screen. Okay. So I'm going to show you some filtered data in just a minute. But again, we were asking our parents, what can we do more of to improve the instructional experience for your child? And and we know that, you know, we have parents in different camps, so to speak, on what model of learning they want for their child, whether it's all-in, hybrid, or remote learning, and all are valued here. And I want to just show you if we filter. I'm going to use this because when we post this and allow parents to look at this, they can look at it through different filtered levels and there's no confidential information in the air. You could filter by school. You can filter by grade level. I have them all on. And right now, what I'm doing is filtering just by hybrid cohort. So parents that have chosen for their child to be at school at the capacity of in-person learning that we have available. So what we asked parents, and you can see in the survey questions, is what is your first choice? You would suggest to improve your child's education in the current instructional model? The choices were more synchronous learning, more asynchronous learning, more in-person time, or nothing. I'm extremely satisfied. You can see that the number one, number one choice was more in-person learning time. And we phrased it in a way that people understood what we meant, either more days or hours in the school building. And when we look at our hybrid learning students at all grade levels, you can see it's close to 80%. When we asked them, and they could only choose one choice here in the instructional improvement choice one, and then one choice in two. And what we see here is now more parents saying they'd like more synchronous time, more hybrid parents, I should say, more synchronous learning during their child's school day. And then coming in second, and the second choice was more in-person learning. When we look at communication improvements, we asked, what can we do to improve communications coming home to you? Do you want more from the district, the school, or the classroom teacher, or none? You're fine with the level of communication and feedback you're receiving. We can see that more often, parents are saying, we're communicating a lot. They're getting a lot of communication. And then clearly, they want to hear less from us and then more from their classroom teacher would be their second choice. So I just want to show you, and I won't go through all the different ways to look at the data, but I I don't think that we saw a lot of data that we didn't expect. But it's important that as we move through the year and settle into routines, that we continuously ask parents, how's it going? We did have an optional choice. Tell us more. What is it that you'd like that isn't in the list? And as you can imagine, other themes were assignment length, homework, more specials, less specials, and of course, over and over, just please get us back to school. You know, a lot of that. I want to show you if we now filter out the hybrid learning model students and filter in the Remote Learning Academy. And for those people who are hearing that for the first time, which is probably no one, these are families that have chosen to have their child learn fully remotely from home for whatever reasons were important to them. But you can see, and this goes back to the cohort grid that I showed you earlier, our our teachers are doing an amazing job. And and when you see that the number one instructional improvement choice was nothing, I'm extremely satisfied. That's fantastic. You know, where the second piece is in this regard, more synchronous time. What we've seen in all the filters is less asynchronous time is usually the first or second choice. I'm sorry, more asynchronous. Parents are not asking us for that, which is in line, at least, is what we're hearing, Desi. If we look at the second choice, it's almost identical data. So this tells us our ELA parents are extremely satisfied as well. And roughly a little bit more than half of this group said if there were going to be more communication, they wanted from their classroom teacher.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
You're welcome. Let me just say this, the task force has seen the data so far. Certainly, our plan is to fully analyze the data, especially the comments, and then continue to work with the task force, with you, the committee, and certainly set some goals and benchmarks as when we may move forward with our more in-person time or what it is that we need to do to improve instruction for all of our students. So more to come on the data and hopefully a little bit more disseminating of the comments.
Great. Thanks, Mrs. Regan. Mr. Cutlass, any questions?
No, just a comment, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'm just happy to see that, based on that parent survey, it seemed to me well over 90% of the parents are happy with the communication they're receiving from our administration. I think that speaks very well of our administrators and the positive effort they're making for our district. And I'm also happy to see that the parents would like more in-person learning. And I know as a member of the task force, we want to do that. And I know, based on Mr. Wilson's comments at the task force meeting, we're going to try to do that in the very near future as best we can for the families in the community. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Wilson?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Great, Mr. Stadman?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
And I heard as well, thank you, Mrs. Regan, for that. I know Mrs. Demos had mentioned at the she was looking for task force, so I'd like to yield the floor to Mr. Wilson for an update on the townwide task force. And also, I talked to Mr. Wilson and Mr. Cutlass, Mrs. Demos. They're more than happy to yield on a Monday if you would like to attend in one of their presence. Obviously, we have two members. If there's a third person, that would require an open meeting. So that's certainly available as well. So but I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Wilson for an update on the townwide task force.
All right. So real quick, you know, the the meetings kind of flow the same way. We start off every meeting and we talk about what's going on in town, what the numbers look like. Susan and Ervy and Kelly all give pretty detailed accounts of what's going on and how things are progressing. Brenda kind of talked about the next couple of things we we talked about. We, you know, unveiled the new dashboard. So folks had comments on what they liked about it, what they didn't like about it, things we thought could make it better, how often we should see it, was there anything better? But, you know, I think it's a great tool for us to have an opportunity for people to have a quick look at at what's going on in the schools. The next thing we discussed at length was the parent survey, led to some good lively discussion. Brenda just took you guys through the parent survey. And so, you know, it's it's just a good opportunity for the task force to get a sense of what other parents within the community are saying and how they're feeling. And then I think the last thing Brenda kind of touched upon this as well was, okay, well, what are the next steps? And I, you know, we weren't clear on that we need to put a stake in the ground because we're going to go here or we got to do this. I think it was more of a healthy discussion about, okay, what are the benchmarks we're going to use to make a change in the model? And if we're looking for more in-person time or it should become unsafe in the schools, you know, what are our next steps? So that's going to be, that's an agenda item on our next meeting for us to talk about that at a little greater length. But obviously, right now, with everything going on in our community and in the state, it doesn't seem like a time that we would necessarily march forward to, you know, an all-in model because, you know, it's just it's just not safe at this time. But those are all things we need to discuss. And I I just would say that we have great parent involvement, teachers, administrators, school committee. There's a lot of different opinions about what we should do and how we should do it. I believe Chris had talked at the last meeting about some of the communities around us and what they're doing and some of the steps that, you know, is there is there a better, is there something different we could do to make it better? But, you know, a lot of good discussions, no stake in the ground or no plan to necessarily move tomorrow to a new model. And that was that was it was about a little over an hour meeting. And we we kind of do that every Monday and the flow is pretty similar. So I'm open to any questions if there are any questions. Or Brenda or Chris, if you have anything that I missed.
Up to Mrs. Demos if she has any.
No, I have no questions. I do appreciate the update. I look at it as as almost a committee report, you know, for updates. Just it's good information for us all to have. And I do appreciate you sharing that with us, Mr. Wilson.
Demos and Wilson, Mr. Cutlass, any comments?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Wilson did a great job summarizing everything.
Mr. Stadman?
God, I want to thank you for the the update and thank you to everyone that's on the team with you as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. To the next agenda item, the school committee matters of interest.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
I'm all set. I've shared all my items this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I'm just going to briefly say, I want to reiterate again that I think I can speak for the whole school committee when I say this. We have tremendous teachers in our system. We support our teachers. We're excited about everything that's been accomplished so far this year and we're looking forward to continuing the success and the remainder of the. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Stadman?
I just wanted to say two things, as mentioned earlier from Mr. Malone. I enjoyed the drama's presentation, their 2020 take on Romeo and Juliet. I thought it was an interesting way and a way that they tweaked it, and the restrictions that have been put on them, so it's very, very entertaining. It was definitely enjoyable, enjoyable spin as well. Since we're not reconvening until next year, just want to wish everyone a safe, happy holiday and bring in the new year, 2021.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Do you have any before we motion? I'm sorry, do we have agenda items? Guy got frozen there. Mr. Cutlass?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, you were frozen.
Yep, Mrs. Demos?
No, nothing for me.
Mr. Wilson?
I have, I have no agenda items. If I do, I'll reach out.
Great, Mr. Stadman?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I'll entertain that motion by Mr. Cutlass at this time to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's School Committee meeting. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We are adjourned for the evening. Good night, and everyone have a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.